Good morning, everyone. I'd like to call this regular meeting of the Board of Trustees of the Alabama Community College System to order. We appreciate your presence. Thank you for your interest in the business being conducted by this board and the business of our system as we serve the state of Alabama. We'll begin with an indication that will be held by Father, given by Father Manuel Williams. Father Williams, a brief introduction I have here, has served as Director of Resurrection Catholic Missions and Pastor of Resurrection Catholic Church since 1990. He has lectured in fundraising and development, African-American Catholic spirituality and history. Father Williams currently serves on the boards of the Alabama Shakespeare Festival, aboard the Technical High School. He previously served as Chair of the Montgomery's Aids Outreach Board, on the NCDC Board, and is co-chair of 2003 NCDC Conference 2006. Father Williams was recognized as the Montgomery Citizen of the Year. Father Williams, we're so honored to have you, and that you look forward to hearing us.
Let us pray. Good and gracious God, you will the fulfillment and freedom of all your children. We thank you for the constancy of the kindness and mercy you extend to all of creation. Especially on this day, we are grateful for the work of this commission and for all who are engaged in the holy enterprise of teaching and learning. We marvel at the ways in which your providence has made all of us singularly gifted persons. We ask that we might continue to be inspired to be seekers of knowledge, seekers of wisdom, and to continue to strive to make our world and our state more just and humane. Gracious God, surprise us with the discovery of how much power we all have to make a difference, a difference in the way the citizens of this state respect and protect the rights of each other, a difference in the breadth of our vision of what is possible as we strive to teach, to humanize, to reconcile, a difference in the way that education and labor, the arts, and all the professions work together for social enrichment, a difference in our response to the great and the least of moments. And so we rejoice, oh God, because the men and women who serve in education this day make a difference in so many lives. May all of our compassion, sacrifice, and service be marks of the affluence of our characters and the goodness of your grace. Because our needs are so great and your providence so bountiful, we make our prayer with grateful but with expected hearts. Let all God's children say, Amen.
Our pledge of allegiance will be led by trustee Crystal Brown.
To the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Each trustee has received a copy of the agenda well prior to this meeting. Had a chance to look this over and review it. The chair will now entertain a motion on the agenda. Motion by Mr. Davis, is there a second? Second by Ms. Brown. Any discussion, any changes to the agenda? There being none, we move to vote, all those in favor of approving the agenda as submitted, please raise your hand. Anyone opposed? Agenda's approved. Next item is the approval of the minutes of our last regular meeting, which was February 8th. Once again, all the trustees have received a copy of the minutes in advance. Any other changes? If this time I'll entertain a motion of minutes of the February 8th meeting.
Motion to approve the minutes of the February 8th meeting.
Motion by Mr. McAnally, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Smith. Any discussion, any changes to the minutes of the February 8th? There being none, we move to vote, all those in favor approving the minutes of the February 8th meeting, please raise your hand. Anyone opposed? Motion's approved. Item 6, public comment. Anyone signed up for public comment? Move to, this is part of our agenda, item 7, academic and student affairs, adult education, facilities, physical information technology, and workforce development. Item 8A1, Cavalier Community College Associate, Applied Science Degree in Automotive Technology. This item's been reviewed at the work session. Everybody's had a chance to ask questions and discuss this, but at this time I'll entertain a motion on item 7A1. Motion by Ms. Brown, sorry, second. Second by Mr. Davis. Any discussion? We have before you a recommendation for an associate applied science degree in automotive technology at Cavalier Community College. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Anyone opposed? Motion's approved. Second is item 7A2, which is an associate degree in applied science in respiratory therapy care at Jefferson State Community College. Once again, we had a thorough presentation of this at our work session last month. I'll entertain a motion to approve this.
Vote.
Vote by Mr. Smith, is there a second? Second by Mr. McAnally. Discussion, questions? I think this is thoroughly covered in the work session. Questions also came up in the interim, I think they've been adequately addressed. Once again, we got a motion, proposal for an associate's degree in applied science for respiratory therapy care at Jefferson State Community College. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Item 7A3 is associate's degree in diagnostic medical sonography at Lawson State Community College. Is there a motion? Motion by Mr. Davis, is there a second? Second by Ms. Ford. Discussion. Once again, this was presented at the work session, February work session, review, any discussion? There being none, we'll call to, to vote, the applied science degree in diagnostic medical sonography at Lawson State Community College. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Item 7A4, proposal for an applied science degree and certificate award in salon and spa management at Shelton State Community College. Is there a motion? Motion by Mr. Davis, is there a second? Second by Ms. Brown. Any discussion? Once again, this was covered at the February work session. There being no further discussion, we'll move to a vote. All those in favor, signify by raising your hand. Chancellor Baker, is there any reason we can't get a motion on items 5, 6, 7, and 8, which SNEED State gave them time, or should HACN separate? I think you're totally wrong. Okay. Those were presented at the February work session. Proceed, SNEED State. Items 5, which is addition for an instructional site, which is related to the avionics technology degree in the airframe technology at SNEED State. So we got items 5 through 8, 7, 8, 5 through 8, SNEED State, an addition of an instructional site at the local airport, associate's degree in applied science and certificate award in airframe technology, a degree in avionics technology, and a degree in power plant technology. Is there a motion to approve items 7A5 through 8? Motion by Mr. Smith, is there a second? Second by Ms. Brown. Any further discussion, or discussion ready? Once again, we had excellent presentation on all four of those at the work session in February. We'll move to a vote on items 7A5 through 8, proceed SNEED State. All those in favor, signify by raising your hand. Anyone opposed? Motion's carried. Item 7A9, degree in respiratory therapy care at Trenton Community College in Montgomery. Once again, this was presented at the February work session. Is there a motion to approve that? Motion by Mr. Davis, is there a second? Second by Ms. Ford. Any discussion? There being none, all those in favor of item 7A9, or degree in respiratory therapy care at Trenton Community College, please raise your hand. Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Item 7A10, issuance of bonds, implementation of special building fee for the construction renovations of facilities at Gaston State Community College. We have a motion. Motion by Mr. Smith, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. McAnally. Mr. Smith, do you have a report or comments from the Facilities and Infrastructure Committee in regard to this proposal?
Yes, sir. This project, because of the amount and because of the building fee, which we're trying to hold costs as much as we can, went to the college, went through the buildings, they laughed, I went under the buildings and looked around. The infrastructure is in need of repair. We look at options to reduce the building fee and what it would do to the college and their long-term plan, the 35-year plan, and it would put them in danger of keeping the other buildings up the car on the banking side if we tried to blow that. So I went back to the Facilities Committee, and we talked again, and our recommendation was to move this forward.
I want to thank you, Chuck, thank you having out of your schedule to go to the sites, and I think you visited multiple sites, did you not?
Yes, sir. We went to Gaston and then went to the project over in Anderson.
Now, I also want to thank Dr. Lavender and her staff for being receptive and transparent on this and your willingness to discuss this with the board, it's much appreciated. And Chuck, once again, thanks to you and your committee for the work they've done. Thank you for taking the time out of your schedule, you probably spent a good part of the day giving that, and plus a lot of the time on the phone on this, and I can just say from a personal standpoint, I know that this is needed, it's just, in this day, it's not easy for us to implement these building fees. And I think the rest of the board feels that way, but we feel like it's something needed to continue progress and to move forward, and very important to Gaston State. That being said, let's see, do we have a motion, is there a question?
Yeah, Blake was there ahead of me.
Oh, good.
Had done some preliminary.
Dr. Lavender gave me a driving tool. One particular building we went around a couple times.
Okay.
No, I, no, 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 not at all, but I'm just thankful too that we have stress, as you said, that we try to keep costs down. We've identified before that we're not exactly competitive in the southeast with our tuition rates and fees and the warranty, and that's why we ask the hard questions. And President, you often have to provide a lot more data than you would desire, but it is our obligation to ensure that when we do something of this magnitude, it's truly needed, in this case it absolutely is and will be a great solution.
Thank you for me, yes, and thank you for your input. Any other questions, trustees? Once again, thanks to the committee for their work. Yeah, we're going to do your end to the court. Just as the chair by has her say.
I appreciate Dr. Brown, your dedication with us as we work through all of our questions and concerns. She'll do it about it.
Anything else? There being none, we move to vote on the issuance of bonds, special building fee, construction renovation, facilities at Gaston State Community College. All those in favor, raise your hand. Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Item 7A11, allocation of industry certification initiative funds for the system. Once again, this was on the work session, I think all the questions have been answered on this. Is there a motion? Motion by Mr. Davis, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Brown. Any discussion, questions? There being none, all those in favor, signify by raising your hand. Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Into section 8, executive legal and public information, action items are, one policy, first is policy 60701, evaluation of system residents. Chancellor Baker, I would, I'd like to, again, we've done this previously, but the policy committee, part of the, for this particular project, and the group of presidents that were involved in developing this, this is well beyond just a simple evaluation of presidents. It's evaluation of the presidents as it relates to the college itself, and is a rather detailed evaluation on a regular basis. The presidents went through this effort and put it together, and I think, I'd like to commend them, commend them on their seriousness about how to develop this policy. I think it will, over a period of time, make a huge difference in the schools themselves and the effort that the presidents put in managing each of their facilities, the instructional programs as well. So, again, Perry Ward, I think is here, he chaired that committee, and Perry, do you have any comments you'd like to make?
Yes, Chancellor members of the board, we had a great committee that worked on this. I thank Dr. Lavender, Susan Munnell, and I'm not sure, I see any other presidents who were on the committee, but we spent a lot of time with the leadership, with the leadership of Ms. Price in putting this together, and had a couple of conversations with you, Chancellor, and we feel that we have an outstanding document that will really look in-depth at all the presidents at their various colleges on a basis that we can really see how effective they are, and we think in the long run, it will be good for the individual colleges and their communities and for the Alabama Community College. Thank you for making a great committee.
Thank you, President Ward, and thank you to everyone else that worked on this committee. We appreciate our presidents, we appreciate you working important items like this into your very busy schedule and workload that you already have assumed as being president of your own institution. Susan Price, thank you for your contributions, and also all the other staff in the central office for your work on this and other policies. It's appreciated, and it's important for... Anything else, Chair? We have a motion to approve policy 60701. Motion by Mr. Davis, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Ford. Any discussion? Once again, this was presented at the work session in February, it's been thoroughly reviewed, and a lot of good work has been done on this by, me chaired by President Ward and everyone else involved, and we appreciate that. There being no further discussion, all those in favor approving of policy 60701, evaluation of system residents, please raise your hand. Anyone opposed? Motion's approved. Item 8A2 is a bookstore operations agreement for Barnes and Noble College booksellers at Gaston State Community College. Once again, this was presented at the February work session and reviewed, I think we had it prior to that, and we've found everything to be in order, with Mr. O'Brien, our legal counsel, is there a motion to approve this?
So.
Motion by Mr. McAnally, second by Mr. Smith. Any discussion, questions?
Mr. Chairman, I just appreciate the business analysis of this, and twelve and a half to fifteen and a half percent return, someone else is doing the work for you, it's not a bad deal. Appreciate that, Dr. Lavender.
Thank you very much, everybody.
As well as the renovation, I think it maybe sounds a little strange.
Any other comments or discussion? There being none, we move to vote on the bookstore operations agreement with Barnes and Noble College booksellers at Gaston State Community College. All those in favor, raise your hand. Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Item 8A3, sale of real property at Jefferson State Community College. Is there a motion to approve this?
Vote.
Motion by Mr. Smith, is there a second? By Mr. Davis. Okay, we're so glad to see this on our media. That's an inside joke, it's, this has been hovering around for a while, and we just tickle things to sell this property in the state of Alabama. Any, any discussion, any other comments, signs, relief? Thanks for everybody for the energy to work through this, the staff that worked on this, thank you so much, and I know it has not been easy in putting all these parts together since we got here. Once again, you've got before you, sale of real property to become part of the highway right-of-way at Jefferson State Community College, the motion is second. All those in favor, signify by raising your hand. Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Item 8A4, we have a resolution recognizing April as Community College Month. Have a chance to look this over, and I'll entertain a motion on this now. Approve it.
I agree with you. We approve this resolution.
Motion by Ms. Brown, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Jeff Smith, I got very good, thank you, so. Any other questions?
The community college state is what they... At which time, I can't tell you all that goes on in the community college state, we flood this town with staff, faculty, students, and we promote the community college in particular, trying to address the general population.
I think it's great, and as has been said before me, any time's over, we've got an excellent story to tell, and we just need to continue to tell that story and improve how we tell that story, but this observation has been going on for quite some time, is just an outstanding way of recognizing all the good things that our system does in the state, and all the different levels of hours of work at this system contribute to our state. Any further discussion? There being none, we move to vote, all those in favor of approving the resolution recognizing April as Community College Month, please raise your hand. Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Like to provide that. Moving to item 9, on our agenda, Personnel Committee, I believe the Chair of our Personnel Committee, Milton Davis, has a report.
Yes, Mr. Chairman and Alabama members, as you know, the ACC has Community College System Personnel Committee, and this system, Blake McAnally, Susan Ford, and myself were appointed for the February board meeting to provide a recommendation to the board after Dr. Heinrich submitted his letter of retirement. Dr. Heinrich's retirement set into motion the posting of the Chancellor position, announcement in accordance with the Alabama law to begin the search process, and the position was posted on February 10th and remained up to 30 days, with the official closing on March 13th, 2017. The committee hired a third-party consultant, Horizon Point Consultant, to receive and process all of the applications. We received a total of seven applications, and then upon review of the applicants' resumes, the Personnel Committee determined only one candidate really exemplified the leadership and experience that's required to lead our institution, and which is comprised of 26 institutions and the Alabama Technology Network, and the candidate that we selected and recommend is Mr. Jimmy Baker. With that being said, I would like to make a motion to the board to appoint Jimmy Baker as the Chancellor of the Alabama Community College System effective April 1st, 2017.
Motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. McAnally. Any discussion? I first would like to thank Mr. Davis and the committee, Ms. Ford and Mr. McAnally, for the outstanding work and job they've done, and working through this is so very important. Congratulations to Chancellor Baker, although it has been somewhat of a, I would say, sad time receiving the retirement notification from the Chancellor hiring, I can't tell you how fortunate our board and our system has been that Jimmy Baker has been there for us, was willing and able to step in and continue many initiatives, and also starts in important initiatives and handles many situations that have come up in the interim. His work has been exemplary, it's been excellent, and I have no criticism whatsoever, I shouldn't even say that, but I mean, it's just been outstanding, and the communication with the board has been above and beyond. The transparency has been above. Thank you for that, Jimmy, and we look forward to working with you in the future, once your tenure begins. Any, any other comments you would like to add?
What else I have?
But anyway, we're excited about this. I think we're on our way. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If there's no further... If there's no further discussion or comments, all those in favor, please raise your hand or say by voice. Anyone opposed? It's unanimous? I can serve.
Mr. Chairman, I've been a blessed son in my life. I've had a lot of great opportunities. I've never had an opportunity to do what I think the Community College System can do for this state. And to be blessed with a board such as you are, who are totally committed to the proposition of doing everything you can to make this system a valuable asset for the fulfillment of the lives of the people in this state and quality of life is unprecedented, my friend. I've worked with a lot of organizations over the years and I've never yet been disappointed with a board member's attitude. That's unique because you are totally committed to this and it's only with that understanding that I'm not only willing to, but excited about the opportunity to discern. Thank you.
I would ask the Personnel Committee to meet again and basically consummate the terms of this employment hire with Deputy Chancellor Baker. If I have appropriate time, come back with a request. Anything else? Item, my chancellor's report.
I'd ask Bloom to give us an update, legislative update.
Good morning. Thank you, Mr. Chancellor and board members. I'll tell you, it's a very busy time over in the legislature. We've been three days this week, in fact. As I speak right now, we're here, the Senate Education Budget Committee is actually taking up and debating the education budget. So after I get done here, I'm gonna run back over to the State House and try to figure out what they've done and hopefully report back to all of you later in the day on where we stand. Short of it is, we have had a very, very successful start to 2017, let's say. In fact, I just got a text. As I said, the Budget Committee is meeting currently. I just want all of you to know, Senator Orr spoke very, very highly of all of you to the committee as well as Chancellor Baker and Jeff Lee. I mean, just across the board, there is a very positive attitude right now across the street about what's going on here at the Community College System. It's a testament to all of you and what you do and really just across the board about what we've been able to accomplish. Again, session has been very successful. Probably the most important thing that has happened thus far is the reconfirmation. We were able to get four of our board members reconfirmed early in the session. Things can get bogged down over there quickly, so it was extremely important to get this done early. And there's several people to thank for that, really Governor Dentley. We can thank him for reappointing the board members as well as sending over those appointments others the first day of the session. We can thank Senator Clay Schofield, the chairman of the Senate Confirmations Committee and that entire committee for bringing those up and passing those out in the first week of session. And really thanks to the full Senate for getting that done in the second week of session. Very important that we got that done. So just want to congratulate Mr. Thompson, Ms. Boyd, Ms. Brown, and Mr. Smith on a new four-year term for all of you. Thankfully, we won't have to deal with confirmations again until 2019. So congratulations. Another thing we've been able to move quickly through the legislative process is body corporate legislation that was part of the board's agenda was passed in January. We're at a point now where we're really one more vote away from having final approval of that bill to be sent over to Governor Dentley for his hopeful signature into law. You know, really the only thing at this point is just trying to getting it up before, you know, things bog down over there. There's a number of huge issues that they'll probably start debating here in the near future. We're working hard to get that up before then and get final approval on that deal. Lastly, as I said, the committee is over there as we speak debating the education budget, so I'll know more later in the day about where we stand there. But I did want to take a minute just to kind of briefly explain kind of where we're at in the education budget this year. This year, it has definitely been, the budget is more lean this year as far as new available dollars that can be appropriated than in the past years. This year, we have, the education budget has an appropriation cap from a law the legislature passed several years ago. And that cap this year is ninety million new dollars that can be appropriated in the budget. That sounds like a lot of money when you start looking at some of the big-ticket items that are out there. Of course, PHEP in the teaching retirement system are asking for increases. It's very important, you know, for our employees that they continue to maintain a good retirement health insurance system. So those things will likely be appropriated. There's also an issue that has arisen with the veteran scholarship program that has really ballooned over the past few years. And the legislature has to fund that. It's not something they can't fund and that's going to be an additional thirty million dollars for the last year that has to go for that. So once you take all of those things and the odds and ends, that ninety million is spent. So we've been working very hard with the budget chairman and other members of the legislature to try to get as many new dollars as we can. Very hopeful that we can get some additional money in workforce development to do some of the things that Jeff has brought to the table. We'll keep pushing for that, but I just want the board to know it's very lean times. We're gonna try to get as many new dollars as we can, but there is certain limitations this year on what we're saying. But I hope to have some information for all of you later in the day once I figure out what the committee has passed. Any questions? Say, thank you for the update. Thank you for the update. You really did this. Appreciate that.
Just regular emails are good. It's concise and to the point. Thank you. Thank you for all of you.
I have one other issue that I thought I'd include. I'll get back to the budget. Prison, they all is... All of them. I don't know where it's going if it's going anywhere. But all of that has raised a significant issue. Dealing with prison education. As you know, we don't lose changes there and it is here and it is taking on the responsibility. I'd like to think willingly that I'm glad she's there. But we're gonna have to really, really get focused on improving what we're doing in prison education. This afternoon, we're reviewing our goals and objectives and Jeff will address some of that. But as we move forward, it is gonna be our intent to coordinate prison education across the board at a different level than it has been. I don't want the presidents that are involved in prison education thinking we're gonna take the program to land. But we're gonna have to change some of the leaps that we're doing to update the certification for it. You'll be hearing more about that as we go along, but it's an important issue in the legislative process. And the President Pro temp, the Senate is working with us very diligently to ensure that that process is taken into consideration as they do in any legislation. Just be aware of that. We want to talk about this at a later time, but I just want you to be aware, because you already know, just by the record, we are undertaking the process of going through a search by the permanent president, Mark Shelton. And we've just started, had the first meeting, I guess, yesterday, starting the process for this. I'll keep you posted as we go along with that. This afternoon, the work session, and I'll assure you, this is something that we want to do on a regular basis. But there's a lot of, there are a lot of issues out there that we are in one way or the other involved with and moving forward in terms of working with. But I'm kind of looking at this afternoon as a dry run and I want you to be involved and make any suggestions that you can. Because the President Pro temp, the Senate has, in his mind, a plan to move forward with developing an education program across the board, K-12, Hiring. And he selected us because of the work you're doing on the board and his confidence in what you're doing. And I'm absolutely convinced it's also the work of our staff to be the first president. And he intends to build from that to get to the rest of education. So this is kind of a dry run this afternoon and feel free to, let's talk through it and make suggestions. Because I want it to be representative of this board and what we're about. So as we move through that, just understand that. And I don't know if you would like in any way to mention what is happening with the governor's goal of sixty-five by twenty-twenty-five? I know you're not, I didn't ask you to do this, but I'm asking you now.
Christian B. Cranton, the governor's education liaison.
Yesterday, the governor announced his attainment goal for Alabama, sixty-five by twenty-twenty-five. A lot of this discussion came out of, the Georgetown Public Policy Institute did a report of by the year 2020, where states and nationally jobs will be available, where the jobs, the jobs that are available, what will require a post-secondary credential. So yesterday, he kind of briefly announced and there's still work to be done about the initiative. Very much highlighted the work of the community college system and basically kind of highlights what you all are already working on. At the February work session, I believe you had a couple of community colleges that announced they're, we'll be starting a new degree program. And it was at the response of the hospital saying that there's a shortage in healthcare. That's pretty much the basic of an attainment goal, continuing those discussions and having business and industry working for, working with, together with education institutions to prepare the workforce and apply them with the credential that they'll need to have a degree. So this conversation has started. I've worked with Mr. Lynn and Dr. Rothmer and Chancellor Baker on this and they're continuing discussions. But that's kind of the beginning of the conversation and we'll work forward to hopefully establish some type of executive order. And a lot of this is kind of a national trend too. You know, Tennessee with their drive to fifty-five, that is their attainment goal. And it's really brought all these key components together to address our need. So I'm happy to talk more or take any questions if you have.
Thank you. This fits in with what we've been talking about. In fact, when we first started talking, you were in the middle of those meetings. And then we've talked our presidents now. I'm not willing to just talk about sixty-five by twenty-twenty-five. We've been talking about presidents, let's set goals as we go forward. Enrollment goals and graduation goals and other kinds of goals. I find that if we set a goal too far out, that's too big, then it's easy to ignore it. It's kind of hard to ignore it if you make it reasonable and close to it. And so we're working toward that and we're gonna talk more about that this afternoon, but I just want you to be aware of what's going on.
Any other comments?
I wrote these down even before Christian spoke. Everything we did in Section Seven today included our presidents and our institutions interacting with aerospace and defense companies, I think six or eight of them, car dealerships, clinics, hospitals, UAB in particular, hospitality industry, cities and airports, and with several of our workforce development councils. And been a part of a few of those meetings at the Robotics Park over in North Alabama. Crystal and I have with Jeff Lynn lately, where we're reaching out to K-12, reaching out to industry, having some very frank discussions and frankly, long overdue discussions, I think, with industry from what we heard from them. So it's really great to be a part of it. It's great to see what we're trying to accomplish, be implemented in the interaction and to recognize that what we're doing is a response to business and industry. And we forever gotta be able to do that and respond quickly. And so I'm just thankful for the interaction that you all have as presidents and institutions with business and industry and bringing relative programs to us for programs.
Like as we had, and you attended, and you attended the one at Robotics Park. Jeff, could you give us a quick summary of that as well as of the Mobile visitor? I just think this is so important because it does tie K-12.
Sure. Thank you, Chancellor. Thank you, members of the board. Two events we recently had in the last three weeks. One was at the Robot Technology Park where we hosted over a hundred and thirty high school kids. Most of them were ninth graders, but we had eleven and twelfth graders that came there as well. We had Mercedes, Toyota, EFI, Dyken, several other companies there that were actually talking about careers in manufacturing, talking about their salary wages coming out of Calhoun. Calhoun was there recruiting students to go into the program. Quite frankly, I think there's a video of one senior from one of the high schools that changed his life. And he's actually, he now wants to become a maintenance worker on robotics lab, probably working at Toyota in his back door. And so that was a great event. We had a great press release there where Senator Orr spoke, Representative Holtz, or Senator Holtz spoke as well. We had members of the Economic Development Board and members of our board that spoke there. So we got great coverage from that across the state. This past week, we were down in Mobile at the Mobile Veritime Institute Training Center, the AIDT Training Center. We did a similar event where we had about three hundred and fifty kids that came in. And they actually toured through the area. They went and looked at different programs that we offer students coming out of high school, some dual enrollment programs that we're pushing into the Mobile area through Bishop. And we also had several hiring companies there. OSTO was there, Ingles, Performance Consulting, National Guard was there as well. So we had a great turnout of a lot of different companies. There's other companies there as well. And then our vice chairman, Al Thompson, came and toured the area as well. So it was great turnout. It's a great way for us to actually use assets that we have across the state to promote careers in education or in manufacturing through our educational programs that our colleges across the state. So any questions? Quick review? Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you for your observations. Blake, just write a point. Any other comments for the board members?
I was just gonna say, Jeff had awesome day Friday with a great group of industrial folks in Alabama. Just having that communication with Jeff is really, always be there when we're there, like if they made one of the moments about what we're doing here as assistants of Senator Orr, open up the... it up, and so just that communication is really important. Thank you, Jeff.
From a committee on infrastructure, so because I want to thank the Presidents and reiterate that the work sessions are very important, and those are more detailed, unfortunately we won't, sorry, but after that, there are a lot of conversations that go on between the school, provost, architects, engineers, I just thank the Presidents for their staff and patience, and we want to help you, and we're gonna ask the hard questions, and I really appreciate what y'all do, and I thank you.
Once again, thank you for your presence here, we appreciate the staff, how our Presidents do, and how you support our Board and encourage us and work with us, we appreciate all the cooperation, just excited about the things to come, because we have, we've just got a lot, just great untapped potential in the system, we're excited, I know the whole Board is, about the things to come in the future. If there's nothing else, we'll, we're gonna meet again this afternoon at one o'clock in the President's Conference Room for our work session, our next Board, regular Board meeting will be April twelfth in this room at ten AM. Any motion to adjourn? Is this second? All those in favor, say aye. We adjourn.